Hi Jackie.
Hi.
Yeah, I can hear you fine, yep. Have you or has anyone sent out anything new or any versions of anything new on as a marijuana? Or the new stuff that's coming your guys way since the last meeting? Because I didn't receive any, anything except the agenda.
I will send you the latest copy of that that I guess I didn't send that to you. After the meeting, I made some corrections.
Yeah.
I'll see if I can send that to you right now.
That would be great. Thank you. Yeah. And is that the only item? I gotta look back at the agenda. I can't remember if you had anything else. So I guess just that, yeah.
No, I have nothing else because I thought maybe Dennis would send me the.
All those harbor things or whatever. Yeah, okay.
Hello Jackie.
Hi Al.
Hello Sarah. Hello Susan.
How are you?
Good.
All right, let me see if I get that.
Here it goes.
Okay.
Hi Emily.
Hey everyone.
Hello.
I've got an email and it's the, it says April fifteenth draft. That be the new one? Yep. Oh, great. Good. I'm all up to date with that. Thank you.
I thought maybe I would get an email from Dennis saying select one have want to pass this on to you, the port and harbor. But he didn't do that. So I just sent Kathy an email asking if she would send me a clean copy of the, of the ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
She said, well, it was in the, it was in the package, but when I put it out from the package, it's got draft across the front. And I just would like a clean copy to start with.
Oh, of the original ordinance, you mean? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. That makes sense. Yeah.
Hello Dawn.
Hello, how are you?
Well, I got that. Okay, thank you Jackie.
Hello Anna.
Hello.
We have enough to get going, although we have to wait another 20 seconds to be official.
Is Carl joining us tonight?
He's on vacation. He won't be here for six weeks or five weeks.
Wow, where is he?
They're taking a trip across the country.
That's cool.
Doesn't go any higher. We won't see him for six weeks. Gas gets higher, we may see him a little early though. Take a left turn somewhere and head back.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's 5:30. I call the ORC meeting to order on Monday, April 25th. As we have enough people present to have our quorum.
And a riddle and we've got four of us. That should be enough. Chris resigned, so we have a vacancy. If anybody knows anybody that would like to be on there's six, limit of six people on the, on the committee.
First order of business is approving the minutes of the last meeting. Do I have a motion from anybody?
I make motion to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
Discussion. Without any discussion, vote Jackie.
Yes.
Al, yes. Dawn.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thing on our agenda tonight is to go forth with the marijuana draft ordinance. Anybody have any comments on the latest addition that was sent to us?
I went, went through it after I sent that out. I went through it and went through my minutes again and found some things that I had left out. So I will tell you the things that I've changed. On page, if you have yours there, on page two. We aren't dealing with medical marijuana at all in this ordinance because we don't, the town doesn't have to regulate that. The state regulates it, but as I understand it from the, you know, the cheat sheet that the MMA sends out, that that's not regulated by the towns. So I don't know if everybody agrees with that, but if they do.
So I think the town doesn't regulate the growth of medical marijuana, but they do have a say as to whether there can be a medical marijuana retail store cultivation or not cultivation. I'm sorry, retail store testing or nursery. And we need to choose whether or not to have those in the ordinance.
They are all in the ordinance, but the, but the medical. The medical part is not, is not in this ordinance. And from what I gather from the state is that it doesn't have, that the towns don't regulate that.
Yeah. So I think what, so I think for each thing, like if you have a marijuana store, you can either have a medical store or an adult use store. One retail store cannot sell both medical and adult use. And the town does need to opt in to a medical store. The thing that we do not need to opt into is cultivation by caregivers. And the same thing for testing. Someone, do you know Emily? We had that person come speak to us. Do you remember this in more detail than I am by any chance or Dawn?
You're talking about the gentleman from the marijuana office of policy?
Yep.
Yeah. Your memory is similar to mine. Seeing if I can pull up his presentation quick. But I do agree with you that we can't regulate a caregiver's grow, but we can, we can set standards and regulations for retail facilities, testing facilities, cultivation. And that's why there's a number of towns that have, either they do it all in one and define, you know, all the medical requirements and all the recreational, or they have two separate ordinances in terms of licensing.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So if we want to allow medical caregivers to have a store, or if we want to allow medical testing facilities, we need to opt into that in addition to what we have for adult use.
I think we should just make a statement in this adult use. It may be even have to change the title to include medical stores. But I can't, it just doesn't make sense to me to have a separate ordinance just for the medical because it's not nearly as involved. I mean, we could do it, but I think we ought to just put them both in one.
Which you can do. You would just have to define, you know, we'd have to add like, are we going to allow the same amount of retail stores for recreational as medical use? You know, you have to define how many licenses you would give out for each of those. What the, you know, that the application fees would be set by the select board, same as what you're doing for recreational. And then add to your definitions, what constitutes medical facilities versus recreational.
Well, I thought I saw in the, in the draft, a statement there about numbers of businesses and medical was the last one on the list. Had that been removed?
Sorry.
Well, this is what I was reading from, from the MMA cheat sheet. And it says, now, the main medical use of marijuana act legalizes the use and distribution of marijuana for medical purposes by qualifying patients, medical providers, caregivers, dispensaries, manufacturing facility and testing facilities. It establishes registration requirements through OMP for medical marijuana caregivers, dispensaries and manufacturing and testing facilities. Authorizes registered caregivers to operate medical marijuana retail stores. Allows six additional registered dispensaries and unlimited dispensaries after 2021. Local court enforcement officers can verify caregiver registration information with OMP. Municipally municipalities may regulate registered caregivers, registered caregiver retail store, registered dispensaries, testing facility, manufacturers, except municipalities cannot prohibit or limit the number of caregivers. So if we can't limit or prohibit, why are they, why would they be in this ordinance? I don't, that's what I understand. Default is prohibition.
Sure.
They're just talking about it. You can't limit the number of caregivers and a caregiver from reading the law is somebody who's allowed to grow for like six different patients, I believe. So that's not on the retail level. A caregiver is not going to have a retail store, I believe. And again, it's just from what I read from going through and trying to figure this out. So you can have multiple caregivers in the town because they're not doing anything at retail. They're growing on their property to take to up to six different individuals. That's the way I see caregiver. So that's why I think they're not, they're not allowing the town to say you can't be a caregiver. But you're not doing anything at retail. Nobody's coming to your property other than the guy who delivers fertilizer, I would guess.
Yeah, I think that's right, Alan. They're not testing. So Jackie, if we have our four buckets, they would only be cultivation. And that's the only thing we can't regulate is the medical cultivation. But we do have to regulate a medical retail store, medical testing.
I think you can regulate cultivation also on, on a commercial level, but not the caregiver who's an individual grower.
So.
The same way as we're going to allow them to grow, you know, have a 20,000 foot facility. I believe you can have a 20,000 foot facility for the medical side of it.
I don't know if you can.
The way I read this is that you can have municipalities may regulate registered caregivers, registered caregiver retail stores and registered dispensaries, testing facilities and manufacturing facilities, except municipalities cannot prohibit or limit the number of caregivers. So if we can't limit or prohibit, wouldn't they, if they're, if they're permitted with, without our, without our okay, wouldn't it just go to the code enforcement officer?
I think that's for individual caregivers, not for a business that wants to come in and grow medical to distribute to multiple retail stores.
Well, this says registered caregivers, registered caregiver retail stores, registered dispensaries, testing facilities and manufacturing facilities, except municipalities cannot prohibit or limit the number of caregivers. So.
So I think, and I want to double check all of this. Al, I want to say that there cannot be a big commercial medical grow from just anyone under the sun for medical, like there is for adult use. I think you have to be a registered caregiver to cultivate medical marijuana.
I may be wrong. Like I say, I'm totally not.
I'll check it.
Then.
One more thing. Okay. So you, I think you have to be a registered caregiver to cultivate. And then, which we cannot regulate, but then because you only caregivers can grow medical marijuana, you have to be a registered caregiver to open a medical store and that we can regulate.
Right. You wanted to say something?
Oh, I was just thinking about for people wanting to grow caregivers. Now a caregiver, I just renewed my license, but my canopy is, is under 500 feet. So I'm not doing very much. But they do have different size canopies for medical marijuana, the same as they do for adult use. So we could have a large medical grower as well as an adult use grower. If we want, if we want to go that way. But somebody could, somebody could theoretically with a caregiver card grow large amounts of cannabis. So. I don't, unfortunately, I'm not. I'll just admit, I don't know the law as well as I'd like to in, in doing this. There's parts of it that I'm more familiar with than others. But the caregiver, I do believe there is a definition for an adult use caregiver as well. And I would like not to see any confusion between the two, which it could be there. I think revisiting that, those definitions again, just for the caregiver itself. I want to do that before I really feel very comfortable and clarify things.
Yeah, I, my understanding is there's not an adult use caregiver. And that caregiver is a term specifically for the medical statutes.
Okay.
I'm just sending you this, this cheat sheet from the, from the state. It's kind of, it's confusing.
It sounds like the consensus is we should have both medical and recreational in the same ordinance. That makes sense to me. Does it make sense to everybody else?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so knowing that, we're going to have to somewhat alter our definitions and figure out the proper definition. And I, I believe the same as I strongly supported that we should allow large scale grows because hopefully somebody will build the building to do and we'll get taxes out of it. I believe we should allow that also. As far as the retail of it, it should be in the same zones as the other retail would be. I've thought about it strenuously after the last meeting and I, and I think that we're making a mistake. If we limit, not the retail, but if we limit strictly the, the growing and the testing and the manufacturing just to the Route one, Route 27 part of, I think we're restricting what the town can do. I think we should allow it to be done in the rural zone, which allows other things. It makes more sense to me that if we're going to get a business to relocate here, he can buy land a quarter mile off Route 27 as opposed to being on Route 27 in a rural area. He'd much rather build his million dollar building there and pay half the price for the lands and therefore reduces financing costs over time. And for the town, we'll collect the same tax revenue. I don't know what other people feel about that. When I thought about it afterwards, it just doesn't make sense to me to restrict it. First retail, absolutely to be on the, you know, we don't want that all over the place. But as far as something that generates no commercial, I shouldn't say commercial traffic, no retail traffic. To me, it should be allowed in a, in a rural area and I went and asked the town manager about it and he felt the same way. I, I asked him where he thought it should be and he thought that we definitely should not limit, not the retail, but the, the cultivation, the testing, the manufacturing. We should give it a broader area to be in.
I agree with that because we've already got a lot of restrictions in terms of away from our laundry list of schools, churches, et cetera. And we're already putting in there, not in village one and two, whatever. So I'm fine with that as well.
I support that, Al.
I'm with you.
In principle, yeah. I just don't know if you say in the rural district, what that's going to encompass.
The rest of it was cased unless it's, but it's not really that. When you take into account all the churches, schools, daycare facilities, all those, there are not actually that many places you can put it. In some, I mean, I agree that we should have, we should take out village one and two or whatever it's called. Anyway, but you, there wouldn't even be much you could do in there anyway because of the proximity of all of those other things.
When, when you get past the schools and the church is right there too, isn't it? The.
Yeah.
Baptist church, whatever it is. Then from there to the town line is a lot of property, isn't it?
Yeah, but you limited it just to that one road, which costs a lot more to buy the property because it's on a state road than it will to be a half mile off of it. Some of the zones are not rural, you know, not everything is on rural for sure. Anything residential can't be in, in the other zones, but it can be in a rural zone.
What I guess I need is a, is a map with a
And see if I can pull the zoning map quick. I can see if I can pull up the zoning.
Emily's trying to bring up a, a map.
While she's pulling up the map, I noticed the, the language that we have for the zoning says that the stores can only be in the Route one commercial district. And then it says that all the other types of businesses can only be in that other district. But I would think that we would also want to allow those types in the Route one commercial district too. There's no reason not to have them if someone wants to.
Wants to spend the money to have it there, why not?
Yeah, yeah. So maybe we say that the store is limited to the Route one commercial district. Or maybe I guess lead with marijuana and businesses are excluded from village one and two. And the stores are limited to the Route one commercial district. And then the rest of it is a free for all.
I, I thought we were also allowing retail on Route twenty seven with the exception of all the areas where, where it couldn't be with the thousand foot restrictions.
Okay, here's the, here's the map.
So the rural area is in white.
Lot of space.
And I'm looking at the table of uses that's in the current ordinance. So, um, you know, breweries and distilleries, microbreweries, brew pubs, bottling facilities, light industrial, industrial, onsite manufacturing, those are all allowed in the rural district with planning board approval. Um, so they would obviously have to go for site plan approval, similar to, you know, any marijuana establishment would. And those are allowed in the rural district.
No matter what you're going to build, you're going to come to the planning board.
Right, but if it's allowed in the rural district, the planning board really can't say, no, you can't do it in the rural district. Unless of course it's next to a school or a church.
If it's illegally used, you can't deny them. That's
Right, that's what I'm saying. So it, it, it's not as though they're going to get planning board approval to do it there. They, they automatically can do it there with, they have to have a site plan approval for the, whatever they're doing.
Which means their project would have to meet the standards of the ordinance that you're drafting. So you know where it talks about, you know, the no noxious fumes emanating from the building and certain, you know, setback requirements. It would still have to meet everything that you're putting in this ordinance. And that's what the planning board would be reviewing.
Now, rural here is, let me see, I can't see where the
Zoom in, Jackie.
I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out this section of rural, it's right next to Newcastle on the, on the river.
We're here.
So Al, to answer your question about having stores along twenty seven, I can't remember what our intent was, but the language in the revised ordinance, I believe, only allows them in the Route one commercial district. So if we want to, if we don't want that to be the case, then we need to change it.
Jackie, do you see what you were looking for?
I'm just looking for on the map, I'm looking for the, see where it says Clark's Point? That whole section above that, what is up there?
That's Mason Station.
Down further.
Way up here where it says Clark's Point on the, on the water.
That's like the old Sheep's Got Road heading out there. That's where the, uh, up on top is the Thai house, that little square is the, used to be the, the Thai family on that house. And there's just behind it, there's a development that has, we've approved several times over the years. But the bypass was going to come through.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. Is, is that appropriate for marijuana stores and, and
Not, not just store, not just
Or cultivation and manufacturing.
If somebody wants to buy the land up there, as lo- as long as it's not, you know, a budding a house where they're going to, we could set a restriction. It's got to be five hundred feet from every, any res, you know, from the property line. You could set a restriction. It's got to be five hundred feet from any residential house.
Well, that's, that's what I was getting at, that if you just say rural, it's going to open up this whole area. And I didn't know, I don't know up that, all that area up there that well that I can say, yes, this is where, it wouldn't make any difference whether you had cultivation or manufacturing.
I, I, I think cultivation, and again, maybe I'm wacky, but as, as a person who's built buildings, you're not going to go to a rocky, mountainous area. You're looking for something that's somewhat flattened, leveled. Drill a well, you know, you, you're not going to the, up in that area you're talking about is all rocky and hilly. And we've had to change subdivision up there several times because they couldn't get the roads where we wanted.
You understand what I'm saying? If you, if you, if you say in the rural area and even with the restrictions of setbacks and whatnot, there wouldn't be any objections. Is that what you're saying?
I don't know, just, I'm looking to bring more revenue into the town to keep
Yeah, okay.
And if we only do, originally we spoke only on Route one and said, you're not going to get anything new to come to town. And my goal is not to have a little tiny retail store because that's not going to pay taxes. But if we can get a company to come and spend a million dollars to put up a twenty thousand foot building and have four or five employees, to me, that makes sense because we'll get a licensing fee every year, but we'll get property taxes on it and school taxes on it.
Okay, so then we want to say that the, everything is, is okay in the rural area, right?
Not retail. No, not retail. Have customers coming into, you know, it, other than the area, like I said, I thought it was one and twenty seven. If it's just one, it's fine. But as far as the backwater stuff, the testing, the, the growing, cultivation, the testing and the manufacturing. They don't bring a lot of traffic. They only bring occasional deliveries in and out and not having retail customers coming to them. And they have to have, as you said earlier, they can't be, have noxious fumes that we, they have the restrictions that we said. And it further adds to it, it must be five hundred feet from any, any residence.
Right, okay. All right, so then we have retail on Route one and everything else on Route, uh, in the rural area.
Everybody agree to that?
That should work. Yeah, I like that.
Yes, yes.
Even the rural area that's, can you move the map up a little bit? The other way. Move it down here, this, all this area here. Birch Point Road and all that area.
Look at what's on Birch Point Road already. You have a trucking business. You have a mechanic. You have a
Right, I'm just, I'm just checking because I don't know what's there.
And when you get into some of the better areas, they're not going to pay the price to, to be there. But if you go down in here, we have a little industrial park. It would be perfect to go in there. We have, we have a one industry industrial park that never really developed across from Main Yankee, which somebody might want to come along and put a building up over there.
Jackie, I lived in Washington State when all of their marijuana became legal. And lots of these businesses don't want to draw attention to themselves. They have good odor mitigation. So I think we won't really realize that they're there based on my experience.
Okay, I'm ju- I'm thinking of this when this goes to the voters or to the Board of Selectmen. If we're going to have a lot of opposition.
Take a one lady poll, ask, ask the lady on the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, in general, I don't think we should, you know, really, you know, spend a million years on this in terms of talking it to death just because it's got to go to the select board and the voters. And there's, I mean, I'm fine with what we're talking about right now. I don't know how other members of the board are going to feel, but I wouldn't suggest that, that we spend too, too much time on any one tiny thing because, well, this isn't tiny. But hopefully you get what I'm trying to say that I'm saying poorly.
Okay, if I, if I, as this now, I can, I will put, everything is okay. I mean, the retail is on Route one, everything else in the rural area. Correct? Nothing in, in Village one or Village two?
Village one, Village two. Kay in the rural area with the provision that it's five hundred feet, the property line is five hundred feet from any residence. I think that insulate anybody who's there because we're already putting odor mitigation and, and shielding.
Okay, and you want to put the home cultivation and and medical marijuana, all that back in, right?
Okay, so the caregiver cultivation, we don't put in because we cannot regulate that. But we do want to put in the medical store, um, medical testing. And I think it's medical manufacturing.
Right, all those are medical?
So each adult use and medical, if we think of them as two buckets, each of those buckets have the exact same four things. The only difference is that with the cultivation, with the growing for medical, we, we cannot regulate that.
Cannot.
Yep, so we have four things we can choose to opt in for adult use and three things we can choose to opt in with medical.
I guess I, I, I need to know what three things you can, medical that you can opt into.
Retail, cultivating and testing.
Not cultivating. Retail store, testing, and I think manufacturing, Al, because the caregivers are
Not called manufacturing, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all medical. Now the, and then and then we want the regular, what is, not medical, retail testing, manufacturing. And cultivation.
Um, for adult use, yes. Then because we're including medical, there's one of two directions. We can go with renaming the ordinance and how we refer to everything. We can either in all instances say adult use and medical. So it'd be adult use and medical marijuana business ordinance. Or we could just say ma- marijuana business ordinance and only specify adult use or medical where it's relevant.
Okay, which one do you want to do?
You're the boss, Jackie and Al and Dawn.
I think this called marijuana ordinance.
And now that I've been saying marijuana a whole bunch, I'm going to drop this on you guys. I've heard that at the state and federal level, there's a very good chance they're going to rewrite everything to cannabis instead of marijuana.
Oh, yeah, I saw that. Where some, it's Washington State's doing that, isn't it? There's
I believe it's being discussed at the
Let's be New Age and call it the Wiscasset Cannabis Ordinance.
There you go. Then we don't have to change it.
And within definitions, we should put a definition that the term cannabis and marijuana are synonymous. So let's have one, one, one little definition that those two words are the same. And we can call this the Wiscasset Cannabis Ordinance.
Way to go, Al.
Amazing, succinct.
Okay, known as the WCO. Now, okay, I took out, going back to what I did later, I took out the residency section under section fourteen because we can't require that they're a resident. And I took out such as farmers markets, farm stands or kiosks. Just left it so that it's, other than the license premises. Oh, when we get over to hours of operation, I'm just wondering, do you want to limit the days of the week as well as the hours? Do you want to, that be open on Sunday or?
Let the market do what it wants to do. Everything else is seven days a week now in this world.
I unfortunately have to hop off in a couple of minutes, but I wanted to note, uh, if you don't have it already on page five under fourteen standards for approval, the is not a resident of the state domain is still in there and I believe we were taking that out.
Yeah, I just took it out.
Okay, it's in the
I went through, after I said I went through and did some work drafting. So, yeah, we've taken that out. No residency. Any other questions?
Uh, I have a few little things. I think seventeen H has a typo. Instead of by, BY, it says tie, TY.
Where's this?
Seventeen H.
Oh, okay, let's see.
Um, I think it says, let me find it. There, in one place it says tie.
Oh, I see it. I see it. I should be by, right? Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then, um, so up towards the top where it talks about disqualifying drug offenses, that changed from ten years to five years.
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm bouncing all around in my notes. All the way up at the top, um, disqualifying drug offense is two terms.
Halfway down.
Okay, what are we doing?
Um, change ten years to five years. The law changed and I'll drop that if anyone's interested in the chat.
This is the disqualifying drug offense?
Yep, the state changed it.
Okay, so was completed ten or years early, ten or more years, five, that should be five?
Yes.
That's the law.
Yep, that's the law. And then I'm going to talk about the additional background check, but let me find where that is for you. Okay, so it is on page four, ten B. It talks about the town of Wiscasset obtaining criminal records and background information. Um, I believe that's not necessary because the state does that. So we can say something like, um, that it's contingent upon what happens at the state level. But say contingent instead of we're doing it ourselves.
If you get a license, they do a background check and if you fail that background check, you're not able to stay licensed.
Correct. The state does that, so we don't need to require an additional one. So we can say something like this, approval is contingent upon a background check.
By the state.
Estate background check.
And are we going to have a lawyer look at this because, okay, perfect. We could open ourselves up to liability if we're not really clear in the law or consistent in the denials. Um, my last thing is it seems like we have multiple sign sections. And I was wondering if we should consolidate any of the language we have about signs.
Well, we have one on page eleven. Uh I think that we're, oh, I I think I know what you mean, they have. I mean, there there's, the hours of operation have to be on the sign and the, and then there's other things that have to be on the sign.
I see signs on page eight, page eleven. Oh, page ten.
Okay. Okay, well, one is adult, is is performance standards for adult use marijuana products manufacturing facilities. And testing facilities and the other one is for the performance standard for adult use marijuana. So different for the stores from that it is from the um the manufacturing. So I'd stare twice.
That's my list.
Anybody else have any other?
I I got one uh one thought here, uh on the effective date. Uh I read through that, this is the first page number five. It seems to me as I read through this. That the effective dates for anyone getting licensed is the same as this ordinance. Well, that wouldn't necessarily be the case, I think the ordinance should be licensed or be approved first. And then sometime down the road, the licenses would be approved.
That makes sense.
I mean, as I read that, I don't know if anybody else sees it that way or not.
Well, it it the effective date of the ordinance and the licensing, in other words, we can't, the licensing.
You can't license somebody before the ordinance is in effect, is what it says.
I mean, I'm okay with it, it was just a thought as I read through it.
Well, it it keep keeps the town from licensing anybody before the.
But I agree, I agree.
All right, we'll go this, go through this again.
Anybody else have anything to add?
And put all the, up with all the, all the medical stuff back in, right?
Yep, Emily, anything? Sarah?
I would just say, basically what I was trying to say before is that I know. We didn't, we as a select board didn't give you a lot to go on in terms of what we want, so um. I'd say make, let's make these edits, um and then I don't, I don't feel like we need to wrestle over this further in terms of. Let's, let's see what the board thinks, um you know, and they may kick it back, but um. I don't, I think. I say we, but I'm not really including myself in that, have done a ton of work on this, so. I think at this point, it makes sense to to do these final edits and then send to the board and see, see where it goes from there.
Okay, I will, I will do the edits, send it out to everybody if you have any complaints. Any changes, not necessarily changes, but corrections.
Then two weeks from now, we'll wrap it up and send it to the selectman.
Okay, Sarah? Okay, the the only other thing. On the, well, it's not on the agenda, but um. The selectmen have asked us to look at the Port and Harbor ordinance. And I was gonna send it out, but I didn't have a clean copy of it, so I've asked Kathy and she said, well, it was in the, it was in the uh. All the documents that were sent, but I can't copy it from the. From the uh agenda thing, so. I it I assume she will send it to me and I can. I assume this, it's, this is legitimate that we go ahead with this, we haven't gotten anything from the selectman or Dennis.
Yeah, we referred it to the ORC.
So for our next meeting, we'll all have a copy previews for the meeting so we can start looking at it.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Send that out and our goal is to finish the marijuana. From our part at the next meeting, so the selectmen can review or preview with decide where to go, whether it comes back to us or. Goes out the way it is, but timing is getting essential if it's gonna go to the town meeting.
Sarah, would the ORC need to hold a public hearing before it can go to the select board, or would it be more of like a workshop with the select board to see where we stand?
For the marijuana one? I I mean, you have to eventually do the public hearing, obviously, but. I would suggest we, the first step would be just for the board to take a look at it and decide if there are any major changes that. They feel like are needed before it would go to a public hearing.
If we add one word to the title, then we don't need a public hearing, proposed Wisconsin Cannabis Ordinance. Being it's just a proposed ordinance, I don't believe we need a public hearing, then names can always be changed for the public hearing later on.
Normally when ORC gets through, they send it to the select board, I mean to the planning board for a public hearing before it goes to the select board. But you wanna skip that step this time, right?
Well, I think it might make sense not to skip it, but just to send it sort of as an advisory thing in terms of, take a look at this. So we don't then have to do it again, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Let's just propose just to get feedback from what they feel at that point. Because it's, it's not a finished product, but it could be.
Right, because a lot of times we don't know what, what the select board wants. We, we know what we want, it's not always the same thing.
Does anybody else have anything else before we uh adjourn?
No, I'll see you, see you at the town office in an hour or so.
With that, I make a motion that we adjourn. Emily?
Susan has a question.
Thank you, I did my, I did have my hand raised, but that's okay, thank you. And it's, I think this might be a Sarah question, um whoever are able to answer uh uh Sarah. Or with a lot of unknowns still, obviously, at this point, but what is the soonest? That the marijuana uh ordinance could go before voters, I know there's the different hoops has to go through first, but what's the soonest it could um? Go to the voters for a vote?
Yeah, I mean, if unless it's a special election, it would be November.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I see that hand there, I didn't know what it was.
The black screen, at six fifteen P M, I make the motion, we adjourn, do we have a second?
Al's favorite motion, oh, I'll let Dawn do it.
And we have to have a voice vote, Jackie? Al, yes, Dawn? Anne? Good night, everybody, thank you for attending, those on the planning board, we'll see you.